Okay.
Good morning. My name is Maria Sandoval and I am an Assistant Executive Director here at California Post. This is a time on for public hearing regarding changes to Regulation 1005 specific to the District Attorney's Investigators. Members of the public who wish to speak are asked to limit their remarks to no more than five minutes. If you plan on going over that time limit, please advise when it's your time to speak. Some housekeeping issues or items. Per the Office of Administrative Law, an agency may set reasonable time limits. That's why we're asking you for five minutes per. We can recommend comments not to repeat written or earlier comments. Remind all of you that this purpose of this hearing is to obtain public comments and recommendations. And post staff will not be responding to the public concerns at this hearing, but will address relevant comments in writing at the final statement of reason for the Office of Administrative Law. Now, we do have a court reporter. Please state your name for the record or you'll be listed as anonymous. And in keeping with commission protocol, members of the public who are here in person will be allowed to speak first. And individuals who are on the call will be allowed to speak secondly. Is there anybody who wants to start as far as public comment? Well, like I said, this is something we're trying to keep in commission protocol with and do things the way we do with commission. I understand what you're saying, but we're trying to keep in 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 protocol. So we're going to go ahead and do public comment with people who are here first and then we'll go to him. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time?
Good morning. My name is Fred Heestand, spelled H.I.E.S.T.A.N.D. I'm an attorney in Sacramento and I represent three clients here that you're familiar with. The Los Angeles County Professional Peace Officers Association, the Association of Orange County Deputy Sheriffs, and the Riverside Sheriff's Association. We filed a brief with the commissioner lodged it on September thirteenth. And this morning I had my prepared remarks sent to you lodged with you. So I'll not repeat them. But perhaps summarize them shortly. But I wanted to do this with some guidance as to whether my client's time, which they would would give five minutes for, they concede to me so that I might go over five minutes and otherwise you're gonna hear from them as well as me and there may be duplication and and more time spent than if you let me go more than five minutes. If I need that, I'm gonna, I'm not anxious to do more than five minutes because I know how boring it gets listening to the same voice drone on. Can you give me some guidance on that?
Do you have any idea how long you're gonna be?
Less than ten.
Okay.
Five to ten.
And again, what we ask you to do is what you prefaced in saying that you're not going to be redundant, since we've received all the information and it's attached to the OAL package.
Yeah.
You want to hit the high levels, that's fine, but to to go over each one is really not going to be anything that is conducive to trying to get this public hearing done, but I want you guys to be able to say what you need to say.
Reminds me when you, when I appear before appellate courts, they say, we've read the briefs. So you don't need to say anything you've said in your briefs. And then you start to argue and they say, did you, did you say that in your brief? If you answer yes, they say, well, then you don't need to say it here. If you answer no, they say, well, that's a new point. We can't consider it. So you're kind of left in that dilemma. But I I will try not to be redundant.
I guarantee we read your brief.
You did, okay.
Go ahead and do what you would like to do.
Are there any commissioners listening to this now or is it something they they review later on through Zoom recording or something?
This is an open forum, so anybody can sign on from Facebook or just watch it without us knowing who actually is in attendance.
All right. Well, we, we have several points to make about the the regulation. I know you're familiar with it. And these, what we've done in our brief is look at the Administrative Procedure Act, the regulations of the Office of Administrative Law, and applied those to the regulation and passed meetings of the commission, which you learn a great deal about the process in terms of how this regulation was developed. And by applying those, we suggest that the best thing, and we ask that that the best thing to do right now is to slow down or withdraw the regulation as it is. And there are several reasons for this. The first one is that there's no demonstrated necessity for for this regulation. You know that now because of all the letters of opposition that you receive from the district attorney's offices and district attorney investigators throughout the state of California that were submitted and which you referenced in your agenda for the September first meeting, I think of the commission. And the these forty-six letters of opposition which you referred to make it clear that that there's no perceived need for this regulation by district attorneys. Nor was there any study or survey done by the commission to determine before they, you came up with the regulation, whether the district attorneys thought that the this was a necessary thing. In fact, as you well know, you you originally were just going to study the feasibility of a bridge course. So the people who had the the SIBC certification could then become RBC. And the the staff decided that was not feasible in April. After you in late February indicated they should come up with this bridge course. And so approval was given to the regulation, which was never an option that was considered by you either. Well, it wasn't an option considered in February by the commission. And it was announced then in June and voted on and and approved. But there was, there was no inquiry as to whether there were positions that couldn't be filled. The district attorneys wanted to get the special investigators to become their investigators. In fact, they didn't want it and and they've said pretty unanimously that they don't want it. And we think that under the, under the APA necessity requirements means that there is no necessity. Now, the necessity of element of requirement that the Administrative Procedure Act has says that the necessity must be determined by substantial evidence in in relation to the purpose of of that regulation. And any statute that that would effectuate the 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 purpose of of the regulation. Well, the statutes for for the commission require it to raise the standards for law enforcement and to use the best available current standards and compare anything that you want to do with those those best standards. When when you get to what the purpose of of this regulation is, as you read the initial statement of reasons, it gives two. It says, one, it will make the SIBC equivalent to the RBC. And the second, it says it will give district attorneys the ability to hire either the special investigators or the regular basic course investigators. As as an opinion which we cited makes clear that this is really a statement of what the regulation does. It's just a paraphrase of what the regulation does in both instances. The purpose of 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 any regulations that the commission adopts is to have the best standards and and to, you know, judge those standards with with what you have. Well, making the SIBC equivalent to the RBC does not raise the standards. As as many of the letters from the district attorney's offices clearly said, the SIBC requires few hours, fewer courses, and different courses than the RBC. So when you combine the lesser, you know, with with the greater, what you've done is watered down the greater. And and all the district attorneys, pretty much uniformly, I'd say all, but said that they don't want to hire SIB, they don't want this ability that you're conferring upon them and that they would not hire SIBC people. So you sort of wonder what the purpose of the regulation is if they're not going to hire them. Which then gets to the question which was not examined in the initial statement of reasons is if you're not going to, well, if you're combining the the lesser with the greater and you get the lesser, you you're not improving the efficiency or effectiveness of law enforcement, which was another thing said in the ISR about why you want to have this regulation. You you can't improve the the efficiency and effectiveness by having somebody with less training and less courses qualify for a position that you now have more training and more courses required for. It's, it's just counterintuitive and it's an irreconcilable difference. I think I use the example of Abraham Lincoln's fabled speech to an audience in which he asked them, how how many legs does a dog have if you count a tail as a leg? And they yelled back, five, to which he responded, no. Four, calling a tail a leg doesn't make it a leg. And calling the SIBC equivalent to the RBC, you know, which is the the tail of of the the S, the SIBC is made into the leg of the RBC, it it just doesn't work. It is under the the various criteria that the APA has. It's it's a inconsistent regulation. It it's, it runs afoul of the consistency requirement of the APA. And then the the statement is also made in the ISR that this is not going, this regulation will not affect jobs. But it said, you also say, or the ISR says, that no, it's going to create opportunities for employment. Well, those opportunities that it creates are for SIBC, which if they're hired means that RBC people will not be hired. So it does affect jobs. It does affect employment and that requires really an economic impact statement, which is absent in in the ISR as it has.
Sir, you're at ten minutes, so if I can ask you to kind of wrap it up in the next few minutes, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, I I will wrap it up and I know you said you you don't ask questions. But I urge you all to, you you said you're familiar with our briefs. I I hope the commission reads the brief, it was intended to be helpful. My my clients want to make, you know, this this regulation or any regulations that this commission adopts as as good as they can be. And this one is is wanting. And so they ask that you slow down, you go too fast, you know, reapproach this thing and, you know, take our comments as intended to be helpful in trying to to resolve whatever need that the commission thinks is out there. And and maybe involve the DA's or not maybe. We ask that you involve the DA's and the investigators in in this matter when you take a look at it again. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Moses Reyes, M.O.Y.S.E.S.R.E.Y.E.S. I'm the chief investigator for Santa Clara County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about our objection to Commission Regulation 1005 as it relates to the lowering of training requirements for sworn district attorney investigators. The chief investigators of California are in the process of incorporating as an association to be named the California Chief Investigators Association. I've been asked to speak on their behalf. I would like to reference a two-page letter from the California Chief Investigators addressed to the Honorable Joyce Dudley Chair, dated July sixteenth of this year, that I believe you're aware of. Forty-six of fifty-two sitting chief investigators have signed said letter expressing objection. Only one of the fifty-two agrees with the regulation change. Of the remaining five, some agreed with the objection but otherwise could not sign. And the rest did not respond. We believe that if Post was going to make fundamental changes to regulations that impacted municipal police and sheriff's deputies, they first would consult with the police chiefs and the sheriffs of the state. As the stakeholders affected by Commission Regulation 1005, the chief investigators of California should have been consulted and allowed input regarding any lowering of the standards and training requirements for a district attorney investigator. In Santa Clara County, and I believe in most counties, we hire experienced police officers and deputies that are full peace officers and possess a basic post certificate. As stated in the reference letter, a DA investigator must be intimately familiar with state laws and state prosecution. A great number of cases investigated by DA investigators are generated and referred by police and sheriff's deputies for prosecution. In order to properly investigate and prepare the case, the knowledge and ability of the investigator must be at least equal to that of the police officer or deputy referring the case. The DA investigators called on frequently to assist other law enforcement agencies in their respective counties. Sometimes it's smaller agencies that need help with resources. Sometimes they need help with a complex investigation and sometimes it's the larger agencies that we collaborate with on investigations or to mitigate a crime problem occurring in our communities. The point is that our DA investigators are able to be utilized in this way because they have the knowledge, experience, and the certification to do so. As an example, a small affluent community in our county experienced their first whodunit homicide in fifteen years. Their investigators were trained, eager, and competent. However, they they did not have any experience in homicide investigation. We were able to detail a team of experienced DA investigators within an hour to assist with that investigation. Working with and mentoring that agency's investigators, that case was solved and cleared by arrest in less than a week. Those same DA investigators could be sent anywhere in the county to assist on any type of crime or to participate in any type of investigation or enforcement action. They are not limited in scope or authority. All sworn personnel in our bureau are full peace officers with training and experience as generalists. None are restricted by certification to obtain additional specialized training and experience in any field of criminal investigation. This allows our office to maximize our resource potential for any given law enforcement or community policing need. Please allow me to enumerate and emphasize some of the training, knowledge, and experience that the specialized investigator basic course omits. Officer-involved incidents, officer-involved shootings, use of force, in custody deaths, officer misconduct, patrol techniques, handling disputes, crowd control, car stops, vehicle pullovers, vehicle code enforcement, traffic-related crimes, DUI felony and misdemeanor, and vehicular homicide. In closing, we believe that in this era in which the public is clamoring for law enforcement reforms to include the heightening of requirements for training and expertise, Commission Regulation 1005 does exactly the opposite by lowering the standards. We understand that any district attorney's office can establish its minimum requirements for the hiring of their staff commensurate with their job description and duties. Will Post speak on any agency's behalf in a civil litigation where someone is not hired as a DAI due to the lack of a basic post certificate? When Post is saying that they don't need one? We believe that anything less than a basic post certificate should be called something other than a district attorney investigator and a sworn peace officer for the state of California. Finally, as a super majority of California chief investigators, we say again that we object to the change in Commission Regulation 1005 allowing for those having completed the specialized investigator basic course to be hired as and called a district attorney investigator or inspector as described in Penal Code Section eight thirty point one. We request that you rescind or otherwise not ratify the change. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I thank you for your time. My name is Brent Westwood, W.E.S.T.W.O.O.D. I'm a commander at the Riverside County District Attorney's Office Bureau of Investigation. I am also president of the California District Attorney Investigators Association, which represents about one thousand six hundred and fifty-five district attorney investigators across the state of California. Out of the one thousand six hundred and fifty-five investigators, I've not had any of these investigators reach out to me in support of this change. At this time, CDAIA would like to concur with the comments made by Fred Heestand in our shared opposition to the proposed amendment to Regulation 1005. Again, I respectfully request the commission to reconsider this matter by withdrawing this regulation change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for taking the time to do this. My name is Pat McPherson, P.A.T.M.C.P.H.E.R.S.O.N. I'm a chief investigator for Fresno County DA's office. I did sign the letter that was referenced by Mo and I agree with it wholeheartedly. But one of the things I want to emphasize that hasn't been talked about is why a committee wasn't formed. The the essence of change requires some kind of committee to talk about it, to see the impact on each department. And as was stated by Mo, you know, sheriffs would have been reached out to chiefs of police, but we weren't. I know that the association was reached out to, the CDAIA, but really it impacts the chiefs. So I I think a letter should have went out to the chiefs to explain this and have some input at that point. But I I want to go kind of off on a different tangent. As many of you know, AB fifteen oh six was formed by by a assembly bill to investigate officer-involved shootings. Now, I'm on the committee for fifteen oh six when it originated and what I saw is a haphazard effort to create a unit to go out and investigate the most sensitive types of shootings in this state, which is an officer-involved shooting. One of the biggest problems that that committee had or the DOJ faced was finding qualified people to do the job. When I was on that committee, I emphasized to them that they need to partner with DA's offices because they have that experience. DA investigators have that experience to go out and do OISs. Well, they decided that they were going to take over the investigation. They were going to roll at least six investigators, a forensic team, and take over those investigations. Here we are today in September. They have partnered with DA's offices to go out because they found quickly that they didn't have the ability to go out and do those investigations. So they have partnered with DA's offices throughout the state that have spent a history of doing OIS investigations. So when we talk about a specialized post investigator has the ability to do the job, they're single-minded and single-focused. They don't have that wide-ranging experience that we need in DA's offices. I think we need to look at like AB fifteen oh six, what DOJ has experienced. Take a step back. Let's form a committee. Let's table this, form a committee, and let's talk about it and see where we can go. And see if this does work for us or if it doesn't. But I think that given the chance to do this, we could form a solid committee to address this and get the job done. I don't, I don't see where the rush is and I'm asking the committee to table this and and regroup and let's move forward. So we don't have the same type of thing that DOJ faced with the fifteen oh six. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'll keep my comments very brief this morning. My name is Craig Chu. I'm the chief investigator for the Alameda County District Attorney's Office and I happen to be the president of the California Chapter FBI National Academy Associates. In moving forward with this movement in regards to the the matter before you this morning, I have talked to numerous folks who are involved in the police officers associations, chiefs and sheriffs, and I've also talked to a number of individuals who are with FBI National Academy. And those individuals are senior executive law enforcement individuals here locally within Alameda County, across the state, and I've also talked to individuals across the nation in regards to this matter that is before you. And they all are seriously concerned in regards to lowering the standards of a DA investigator. As several of the individuals who have spoke before you or before me this morning, they've raised a bunch of complicated issues in regards to investigative techniques and the quality of investigators. And as the person that was in charge of hiring individuals for the Alameda County DA's office Investigation Division for the last six years, it's very challenging in regards to finding appropriate people by, but by lowering the standards to an SBIC as opposed to a regular basic academy and to find the qualified individuals that are able to investigate extremely complicated cases, whether that's multiple murders. We just recently had a case where our DA investigator who served in Oakland Police Department homicide division for many years, added three additional homicides to two individuals who are charged with two separate homicides for a total of five homicides. And it was based upon his investigative skills that he had as a result of being a homicide investigator. So the the complications or the experience level that we require as DA investigators, it needs to be maintained at a high level. And I have found nobody in support of reducing that level, especially with the scrutiny that law enforcement is under now. And as as we move into the future, we perceive that the 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 requirements based upon legislation and public comments and public movement only being increased and by reducing the the level of training only defeats our purpose and does a disservice to the agencies that we work with, the agencies that we work for, and the public that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Jason Wine. I'm the chief investigator of the County District Attorney's Office. Just wanted to touch on something briefly in that this was initially brought up to help recruitment and the ability to hire. What I found since this has come out and made made more public with our local agencies is that it's actually done the exact opposite. These new officers that were looking at my office are now holding off because they expect the very best of the DA's office. And with this potential change, they're going to hold off because they don't know who's going to be hired and if they're going to be lumped in with this lower category of officer. The other aspect is, right now, we have a very high standard for district attorney investigators. We're the ones that are called when other people don't know what to do. Our guys go out there and it is a recruitment for every case we work because they see how professional we are. They see how much value we bring to the They see how much value we bring to the table. That in turns makes these detectives, these veteran detectives, say, "I want that." If we make this change and we lower the standards, we're not going to get those calls. We're not going to have the value for these agencies. They're not going to call us. Therefore, we're not going to show the value to our community. So I'm urging you to rescind this so that we can maintain the integrity of the district attorney investigative profession. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Wayne Quint, Executive Director for the Los Angeles County Professional Peace Officers Association. Again, we are the certified bargaining unit for sergeants and lieutenants who work at the district attorney's office in LA County, fully sworn. I'm also here on behalf of ALABS, the Association for Los Angeles County Deputy Sheriffs, who represent about 250 district attorney investigators for the county of Los Angeles. Both our organizations, right now, have to oppose this because what Post failed to do was to assemble committees, working groups, stakeholders, and bring us all together. There may be some very valid points, but we need to collaborate on this, and this has not been done. And I'm not picking on anyone from Post, but this didn't come up until June 6th. At February 24th meeting, four options were given. This option that appeared on the agenda at June was not one of the options. In fact, the chair, the Honorable Joyce Dudley, she strongly supported a bridge course. A motion was made by Commissioner Barcelona, seconded by Commissioner Ramirez, for a bridge course. Respectful request, let's slow this down. I think it's obvious, very, very few people are in support of this. So let's slow this down, pull this off the table, assemble working groups that frankly happened throughout the state of California. It did on 9/53 on the reporting data. We actually had stakeholder meetings up and down the state when then Attorney General Kamala Harris called for that. That's all we're asking for here. You probably got very valid points, but you can't lock people out of that. And that's what I think the record shows has happened. I would respectfully ask the commissioners that are listening on this call to let the stakeholders be involved. This is a major, major regulatory change. In fact, I'm almost certain, Executive Director Alvarez, that this is the first public holding on a regulatory amendment in your tenure since, I think it's September of 2016. My understanding is that it is the first public hearing, probably in about a decade, that Post has had. I think that's a red flag. And again, I'm not going to get up here and just tell you I'm adamantly opposed to this. Would like to hear both sides, but you need the stakeholders involved. I hope the commissioners that are listening will take this as just that. Let us be involved. Thank you for your time this morning.
Good morning. My name is Dave Stallions, S-T-A-L-L-I-O-N-S, and I represent the Placer County Deputy Sheriff's Association. We're here to just voice our objection to the recent proposal to change the minimum requirements for the district attorney investigator. As a district attorney investigator, you're tasked with investigating crimes that could be anywhere from child abuse, hate crimes, sexual assault, domestic violence, officer-involved shootings, cold case homicide. That sort of experience, we feel, is only going to be gained through working in that area as a law enforcement officer. We feel like this change will bring an inferior product to a position that is very well-respected and utilized in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Tobias, do we have anybody in the queue?
Next. Hello, this is Todd Spitzer, District Attorney of Orange County. I'm happy to go next.
Go ahead. Thank you, sir.
Hello. Yes. May I go now?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Great. Good morning. Thank you so much. My name is Todd Spitzer. I'm the district attorney of Orange County. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to address the commission this morning. I want to express my very, very serious concerns regarding this proposal to lower the standards for district attorney investigators. My office, the Bureau, my Bureau of Investigation is comprised of approximately 150 sworn investigators under 830.1 of the Penal Code, each of whom possesses a wealth of diverse knowledge and experience. We file over 70,000 misdemeanor and felony cases a year, and the investigators here are a critical resource in successfully investigating and prosecuting these cases. With public scrutiny of our office and law enforcement in general at an all-time high, I'm extremely concerned about the possibility of lowering the standards for these very valuable law enforcement positions, especially when there's no apparent rationale to do so. The staff report for the agenda item merely reflects the differences between the specialized investigator's basic course and the regular basic course in an analysis of the learning domains and scenario tests. What's not factored into the analysis is the additional field experience an 830.1 officer must complete to qualify for their basic candidacy and certificate. I am a former LAPD reserve officer for 10 years, Level 1, under 830.6, and I clearly understand the knowledge that these officers learn handling service calls from cold reports to in-progress crimes, oftentimes under extreme stress, and it can't be discounted. Having extensive experience in investigating a wide variety of crimes as well as dealing with a diverse population is what makes our investigators critical to the success of our prosecutions and our shared mission of pursuing justice. My investigators, but this is true for all the DA investigators across the state, they literally go to the end of the earth to apprehend suspects and bring them back to my county and other counties throughout the other 57 counties in the state to be prosecuted. Their professionalism and their investigative acumen and their dedication to the people we serve is unrivaled. Let me be clear. My stated opposition to this proposed change is not intended in any way to diminish the fine work of graduates of the SIBC program or to in any way belittle what education and experience they have. But it would be intellectually dishonest, intellectually dishonest to believe that there isn't a difference between these two groups, and it can't be ignored. In reviewing the agenda item for the June 2nd, 2021 meeting, Post staff proposed four different options and requests guidance from the commission. I previously have written you on two prior occasions about my objections and concerns. Post is not clearly defining the evaluation process or the subject matter experts consulted in making this dramatic change. My office represents 3.3 million people, and as the elected district attorney, I have not been consulted on this very, very important change. And I'm extremely concerned that this evaluation process was not apparently vetted. If Post wants to pursue this change, I listened to the other testimony. I completely agree it should convene committees to be able to look at and analyze this particular change. My professional organization, the California District Attorneys Association, which represents line prosecutors and elected DA's from across California, shares my concern and has already lodged its objection to the proposed change. Let's be clear, we're the ones that hire these people. My bureau chief does not hire those investigators. He makes recommendations to me as the elected district attorney, and I approve that person. And I want to make sure I'm hiring an individual investigator with the highest standards. Let me also be clear. We are now going through significant changes with how officer-involved shootings are investigated in the state. And we all know the Attorney General is playing a significant role in the investigation of OISs where the suspect or the person has been deemed to be unarmed, which is a statutory definition. We are literally assisting the Attorney General's office in training their investigators in this important role. And there is no more important role or experience necessary from a DA investigator to be absolutely on top of your game and understand all aspects of criminal investigation when it comes to properly investigating officer-involved shootings. That's for the potential suspect, who may actually be a victim, as well as the officer that's involved in the department they work for. So as it stands now, the proposal to lower the minimum training requirements for DA investigators is inappropriate, and it should not be approved today. I would certainly support and be willing to participate in any groups you might want to put together, but I am imploring upon you not to vote in support of this recommendation today. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, this is Paul Bartlett. I'm the Executive Director for the Association of Orange County Deputy Sheriffs and a retired district attorney investigator commander. I represent over 4,200 active and retired peace officers, including the approximately 150 Orange County DA investigators. To recite, we are strongly opposed to the proposed changes to reducing the requirements for the sworn DA investigators. As you know, we've got strong opinion of everybody in the field that is recommended not moving forward with this. Reducing this training requirement for the investigator is not in the best interest of the public that we serve. We strongly disagree with that. Also, we believe that there's a regulatory conflict between Penal Code 830.1 and 830.4. And 830.1 makes investigators fully authorized peace officers. You can handle a broad range of functions that are not included in the SIB training and testing program as we identified before. We have submitted a letter, and as our opposition from our attorney as well, I'll just end it with the fact that we strongly do not support moving forward with this in any fashion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can I speak now?
Absolutely. Go ahead. Can you identify yourself, please?
Absolutely. My name is Brian, B-R-Y-A-N, Demijewski, D-M-I-J-E-W-S-K-I. I'm the current president of the San Diego District Attorney Investigators Association, and I humbly represent 125 DAIs that are all 830.1 peace officers. My association strongly opposes the change in Commission Regulation 1005. If there's anything that peace officers should tell us in this commission that law enforcement in general should be better trained and educated. As we should know, there are numerous bills that have been written that are working their way through the halls of Sacramento showing us that politicians want us better educated and highly trained. By allowing lesser and differently trained investigators to be elevated to an 830.1 status is concerning to my association, me as a law enforcement officer and as a citizen. I'm in no way attempting to degrade officers and investigators who are SIBC academy-educated. My investigators use knowledge and experience they have obtained as a patrol officer detective and numerous other positions to be a well-rounded 830.1 certified peace officer. They provide a better, well-rounded, safer investigator to the DA's office. As a DA investigator, we must understand how and why a patrol officer stops a car or person and investigates complaints. How can you understand that if you were only a public fraud investigator? I understand there's a lot of experienced folks out there that might want to come to DA's office, ATF, Secret Service, DOJ, but ultimately, they can be transferred around the department and go to things that they have no idea how they work. I would like to believe Commissioner Dudley understands this more than anyone as being a district attorney herself. Investigators in my office assist in the prosecution of crimes from petty theft to capital murder. Investigators who have attended SIBC academy often serve in a single-subject capacity, such as ABC investigator or lottery investigator. I have learned that the state has recently started sending their investigators to RBC academy, showing that they understand the importance of this training. I have two investigators that started their law enforcement careers as SIBC graduates, who later attended an RBC academy. I spoke with both of them, referenced this, and both of them stated that they would not be prepared if they did not go to the RBC academy. DAIs do more than just serve subpoenas these days. We recently had investigators in riot gear during last year's civil unrest. We have investigators on task force, working on teams, making high-risk arrests, serving search warrants, and yes, traffic and DUI enforcement. With the changes in law and the requirements that the AG's office has when they investigate the shootings of unarmed civilians, I'd hope this state would want the best investigators. Investigators that understand the complexity of how and why officers use their weapons. I recently heard that in Southern California, the AG's office sent an investigator to investigate an officer-involved shooting that was from basically the lottery commission. This is just a sad state when we start doing that. Most enforcement starts with patrol cops or deputies. Most citizen contacts start with persons in a uniform trying to understand a situation that is tense. How can someone that sits behind a desk looking at computers understand the mind of a deputy when the deputy must take a split section, second action? I've read the minutes from the commission's June meetings, and we always talk about costs, the cost of academy that could transfer the skills to an 830.1. I understand the cost, but what about the cost to my investigators and the citizens when the cost of this runs short? Now, this commission wants to introduce a bridge course to upgrade SIBC graduates with 830.1, then create the course and make it available. I was also informed by reading the minutes that this change would not require DA's office to hire SIBC graduates, that it could be a meet-and-confer item. I would submit the change would give the DA's office the opportunity to use this escape route to cut costs, gain political favoritism, let's not forget the DA's position as an elected official, or as a way to deal with upcoming scarcity of 831.1-trained police officers. This is becoming a real threat based on the way this state currently treats peace officers in general. As the state enacts more and more tougher laws in regards to the training, education, and punishment for police officers, for this commission to lower the standard seems ludicrous. The term slippery slope is an appropriate term for what would happen if this commission continues moving forward with this change. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
My name is Richard Aloise, last name is spelled A-L-O-I-S-E. I am a captain with the Los Angeles County District Attorney Bureau of Investigation and also the vice president of the California District Attorney Investigators Association. I have reviewed Fred Heiston's brief, and I concur with its content, and I concur with the previous speakers. Our opposition as a Bureau of Investigation for Los Angeles is strong, and we propose that you please consider the staff recommendation number two, which basically stated that you would rescind the actions taken by the commission at the June 2nd, 21 meeting related to that modification of 1005 and maintain the existing language and regulation as is. We really are a special breed, and we are very proud of the work we do and the levels of professionalism that we are held to. And to amend this would change that drastically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Yes, good morning. My name is Brian Sullivan.
Go ahead, Brian.
Good morning, Executive Director Alvarez, and those esteemed members of Post that attended today. I am currently employed as an agent with a federal law enforcement agency, and I've been so for the past 19 years. I'd first like to begin by thanking you for providing me the opportunity to be heard and appear before the board today. As I make my appearance today, I'd like to go on record and state my overwhelming support for the recommended changes and amendments captioned under Regulation 1005. Being discussed further at this meeting... and being discussed further at this meeting. I recognize my support represents the minority of those speaking today, but I strongly urge you to accept my voice as a significantly larger representation of fellow supporters and advocates for this change. Investigators like myself have spent their entire careers investigating and prosecuting a myriad of criminal investigations at both the state and federal level, oftentimes working hand-in-hand with state and local partners on joint investigations and in task force environments. The training we receive is not only consistent with what is provided at the state and local law enforcement level, but it is often instructed alongside and provided by our local law enforcement partners. The skill sets, professionalism, and understanding and application of California law we possess would make an outstanding addition to any department or investigative agency. The individuals I speak on behalf of today represent a group of true professionals who are running toward a profession most are running from. We continually witness law enforcement agencies across the street, report record-low numbers of qualified applicants or interested parties seeking a law enforcement career. On behalf of those I represent, I respectfully ask you afford us the opportunity and privilege to apply for these positions. As stated earlier, forty-six chief district attorney investigators signed the opposition letter with five abstaining and one concurring with this change. However, I have personally had the opportunity to speak with several district attorneys and chief district attorney investigators regarding this amendment change. These individuals signed the letter but welcomed the change. The reservation demonstrated from these individuals was not the change, but more so the manner in which it was raised or approved by the Commission. Specifically, the possible reclassification of a DAI under California Penal Code Section eight thirty point one. The general message relayed to me was there was no caveat or consideration provided to differentiate a tenured federal law enforcement agent with an SIBC versus a SIBC holder who did not work in a true law enforcement capacity. As I mentioned earlier, I recognize there is opposition to this amendment. However, the collective opposition has only raised two cillion points to this opposition, and both of which can be changed or modified by the Commission. And the two points are the classification or designation of a DAI under California Penal Code Section eight thirty point one, and the second is the Penal Code Section which requires a district attorney investigator to possess a regular basic certification from Post. It is the hope of my group that the Commission and Post continue to lean forward with a progressive mindset of change and authorize this amendment. I respectfully thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Good morning, this is Skylar Brady.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Skylar Brady. I'm an Assistant Chief Investigator, uh, representing the Assembly on County Bureau of Investigation, and we are also opposed to the proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, my name is Amanda Beach, it's Viasen Victor, E-A-C-H, and I'm a Post member. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on behalf of myself and twenty-four of my fellow eight thirty point three five welfare fraud investigators who are currently employed here at the Orange County District Attorney's Office. We thank Post for its work on amending the minimum standards for training for DA investigators to allow the specialized investigator's basic course, SIBC, to be accepted to meet training requirements for DA investigators. We believe this change will open the door for every county DA's office to greatly benefit from the significant investigative talent that currently exists throughout California. For example, I'm a graduate of the specialized investigator's basic course and have over fourteen years of law enforcement experience in various sworn and non-s sworn positions. Many of my eight thirty point three five coworkers here at the Orange County District Attorney's Office also have extensive law enforcement experience from various federal, state, county, and local law enforcement agencies. I would first like to address the comments of lowering the standards. Together, we have experienced investigating complex felony crimes, including, but not limited to firearms and explosive-related crimes, multi-million dollar financial fraud and healthcare fraud, money laundering, homicide, gang crime, robbery, narcotic trafficking, public corruption, racketeering, terrorism, cyber and computer crimes, and crime scene investigations. Many have also served on various task forces combating terrorism, gang crime, narcotic trafficking, healthcare fraud, and telemarketing fraud. We also conduct confidential investigations that involve county staff. Numerous investigators work collateral assignments and already work with eight thirty point ones in an equal capacity, such as the range staff, drone team, operating the emergency command center at OIS crime scenes, and the gang prevention intervention program, GRIP. We also are expected to meet the same performance standards such as range qualification, defensive driving, pursuit training, TASER training, ACT, and community policing, just to mention a few. The SIBC Academy sets high standards and expectations for its trainees. The Academy provides comprehensive investigative training that is a hundred percent applicable and relevant to the job skills needed by DA investigators. In addition to its diverse experience offered by investigators, the majority of us are SIBC qualified. To quote one of our supervisors who has forty-four years of law enforcement experience as a patrol officer, motor officer, sergeant, pad investigator, and now pad supervisor, he said eight thirty point three five investigators with the Orange County District Attorney's Office typically make more field contact and conduct more investigations on a daily basis than most of our eight thirty point one investigators. Eight thirty point three five investigators at OCBA generally make more field contact and conduct more interviews of suspects and witnesses than most officers with municipal police departments. In two thousand nineteen, eight thirty point three five investigators, including myself, worked the largest housing fraud case in Orange County history. The case included months of surveillance that ultimately led to an arrest of a mother-daughter duo who were frauding the in-home supportive services and Orange County Housing Authority for more than two hundred thousand dollars. On a daily basis, myself and other eight thirty point three five investigators received phone calls from eight thirty point one investigators to assist with locating suspects. I personally have located over fifty suspects that resulted in their arrest. Based on our experience working with eight thirty point three five criminal investigators from other counties, we know California is full of experienced eight thirty point three five investigators who are extremely qualified to become eight thirty point one investigators. Eight thirty point three five investigators conduct investigations with professionalism and dedication and can easily perform the same duties as an eight thirty point one investigator. We also know that there are many talented, experienced, and well-qualified county, state, and federal investigators throughout the state that have a wealth of experience. Such experience will only serve to broaden applicant pool and allow local DA's office to hire candidates best suited for their individual and jurisdictional needs. We believe this proposed change is a significant win for all SIBC qualified investigators and for every DA's office throughout California. Thank you very much for all your hard work on this issue and for considering our input.
Thank you, and hold on for one second. Did you get her last name? Can you spell your last name one more time?
Yes, it's Viasen Victor, D-A-C-H.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Monica Hernandez.
Hernandez or Fernandez?
Hernandez with an H.
Okay, go ahead.
And I would like to add to my colleague, uh, investigator Beach, that I would like to say based on my experience that we are not beat patrol officers, but we handle many duties that patrol officers conduct. For example, apprehend principals and render assistance, make preliminary investigations, prepare reports, establish and maintain effective relationships with others, adopt quick, effective, and reasonable courses of action under emergency conditions. We have, um, familiar with laws of arrest, we do search and seizure, preservation, and presentation of evidence, criminal investigations, report writing, terror-im proficient use of firearms, and chemical agents, gang awareness, narcotic recognition, and enforcement and emergency management. In many of our investigations, we are the first responders in a sense because we are the first line of defense conducting the preliminary investigations. The only thing that we do not do is traffic enforcement. Um, and that will end my comments, but I would like to thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Yeah, good, good morning, Commissioners, I'm Robert Arcos. I'm the Chief of the Bureau of Investigation in the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office. I have reviewed Mr. Fred Highstand's brief and concur and support its content. Our office opposes the proposed amendment to the regulation and requests respectfully that the Post Commissioners adopt Post Staff Recommendation Number Two related to the modification of Regul- Regulation one zero zero five and maintain the existing language of the Reg- Regulation as is. Thank you for your time this morning, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Caller, are you there?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good morning, my name is Katrina Rogers, and I'm the Chief Inspector at the Santa Cruz County District Attorney's Office. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Um, I concur with, um, Moises Reyes, who spoke on behalf of our, uh, Chief Association, but I also wanted to just put the, uh, add input from our office. Our office is opposed to the change in Commission Regulation one zero zero five, and we'd like to ask you to rescind the current change, lowering the certification requirements for district attorney investigators and inspectors. As you know, forty-six of the fifty-two chief investigator inspectors do not support this change. This makes one wonder what problem this change intended to address, that of the district attorney's offices, or a handful of individuals seeking employment with our offices. If any future changes to Commission Regulation one zero zero five are to be considered, we would recommend that a working group, including those directly affected by the changes, be included. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who was waiting on the line that needs to or wants to make a statement?
Yes.
Okay, can you identify yourself and go ahead?
Yes, my name is Joe Hernandez. I am the President for the District Attorney's Inspectors Association of Santa Cruz County, and we too are opposed. Uh, in hearing some of the comments that were being made, uh, I, I think that whenever there's an opportunity to bring in talent or to bring in people who are experienced within our field, that's something that we welcome. But I think when we talk about lowering the standards, that's not what we're looking for then. You're putting, uh, you're putting people in positions that perhaps can't meet the standard that we once were used to, and in looking at how we're trying to proceed going forward, especially by the citizens of the state of California, they have a high standard of what law enforcement is. And I think when you look at them seeking justice for their cases or for loved ones or family members, we have to adhere to what they're looking for, and lowering the standards does not accomplish that. I think if you want to bring in people from the federal side or wherever else they come from that have the experience, then perhaps Post should look at what other alternatives they can do to ha- have them meet those standards, or if they are, how they can come across and work in our state. Uh, that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the line?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Chris Carter. I'm the Deputy Chief of the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office Bureau of Investigation, uh, actually the largest prosecutor office in the country, and we are in opposition. Um, I have to concur with my boss, Chief Arcos, who spoke, and my colleague, uh, Richard Aloisey. Uh, we are in opposition, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the line that would like to speak? Okay, we have three more people who are on the line. Does anybody like to speak at this time? It's gonna be the last call. Going once, going twice. Okay, thank you very much for, um, participation, and this will conclude the public hearing. Thank you very much for attending today, we appreciate that.